Laura, can you hear us in the council chambers?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yep, loud and clear. Thank you.
Okay, good.
Laura is online.
Councilmember Cardillo?
Present.
Councilmember Betancourt?
Here.
Councilmember Bishop? Mayor Protemloa?
Microphone? Is your microphone on? Was there a motion to excuse, I think is what you said?
Yeah, Mr. Hoppar's on his way. So, is there a motion to excuse Councilman Bishop? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes. All right. Public comments present to Government Code Section 549, 54.3, members of the public are provided opportunities to speak or to address the city council. This meeting is a special meeting. Therefore, you may address the council once per meeting during public comments on any matter on the agenda. Please submit a speaker's form to the city clerk before this portion of the meeting begins. As this is a special meeting, comments should not be made on items not listed on the agenda. To address the council regarding an item on the agenda, please fill out the speaker's form and submit it to the city clerk before each item is announced. Each person announcing the council is customarily given up to three minutes to speak, with double the time allotted to non-English speakers using a translator. The amount of time authorized may be adjusted by the chair. If you wish to provide information to the council, please present the city clerk with seven copies. Otherwise, your materials will simply be added to the administrative record. If you're attending the meeting by phone, please press R nine to raise your hand. If attending by personal computer, please click the Raise Your Hand button. Press R six to unmute yourself, state your name, and begin speaking. So, we call for public comment at this point. So, do we have any public comment participants online or by phone?
Not at this time.
None at, none at all, okay. Are there any persons that wish to address the council in the council chamber?
Yes, we have Mr. Rich Gallego.
Okay, very good. Mr. Gallego. Correct. Thank you. So, thank you very much for allowing me to be up here. Not that you have much choice in it, but... Well, we welcome all speakers. I appreciate that. So, really, right now, the only thing I want to speak to you guys about is, is 4.4, the hiring of a city attorney. Okay. And I'm gonna have to excuse, ask you to excuse my ignorance at this point because I looked on the agenda packet and there was no name that it was, that appeared there. So, I don't know if you're planning on discussing or voting or what's going on here tonight, but I just wanted to come forth as a citizen of Palmdale and as a member of the Palmdale Freedom Coalition to express to you that we do not want anybody hired yet until we have a chance to know whom they are and do a little bit of background research. We've had this issue the last time with Mr. John Jones. I would hope that that made enough of an impression that you guys wouldn't see fit to hire somebody without the public knowing who they are. So, right now, that's all I needed to speak to you about. I would like some clarification if you can give it to us as far as whether you're voting on that tonight or if there's a person specifically that you're considering. Thank you very much. Very good. I mean, in terms of clarification, I think it's a general discussion of the situation at the city attorney's office in terms of assistant city attorneys. I don't believe any particular person is being named at this point. Okay. Are there any other speakers?
I, I should say, to be determined. We don't know what will be discussed, but that's his impression.
Right. That's my impression. It could be completely wrong and it wouldn't be the first time.
That's right. If it's legal, they can talk about it.
Very good. Is there any other speaker?
Javier Flores.
Mr. Flores.
Good evening, Mayor Protemp, City Council. On June 16th, 2022, the Palmdale City Council took up the hiring of a new city attorney and interviewed John Jones II as a possible candidate. According to a related 617 AV article, a small but angry group convinced the council to postpone selection of John Jones because of his previous involvement in a lawsuit against the city for district elections. This is another perfect example of the very distinct perceptions two tribes can have on the same issue. I guarantee you that most Latino and African-Americans in Palmdale view John Jones's involvement in that lawsuit very differently than do members of the Freedom Coalition. We view Mr. Jones's involvement in that lawsuit as a very strong positive element. The lawsuit stroked to protect the voting rights of Latinos and Blacks from the vestiges of racially polarized voting. And Mr. Jones was part of the legal team that sought to protect seventy-five percent of the city's population from a government that demonstrably did not care about our voting rights at all. That's what they demonstrated to us. If this is true, why would Blacks and Latinos be opposed to Mr. Jones? Why would we? He protected our interests. Uncontrary, we are very much in support of Mr. Jones because we believe that he would protect the interests of protected classes and ensure the city government would not make the same costly mistakes that caused them to waste seven million dollars on an ill-advised and short-sighted position. Will the current council continue to go counter the interests of the majority? No. Will the current council continue to go counter the interests of the majority of its residents, the non-composed seventy-five percent of the city's total population? Or will they finally accept responsibility for securing the interests of all residents? Their decision on this issue, the very new city attorney will answer that question and I have for you documents to be placed on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
I would. I didn't turn in a card, but can I speak? Do I need to turn in a card?
Yeah, please do.
It's Carol Ross.
So, I would like to speak about the hiring of the city attorney too, and I'd like to comment on the last comment. Our Palmdale Freedom Coalition consists of many Latinos and Blacks. So, I just want to say that that, that does not necessarily, those comments wouldn't necessarily represent the Latinos and the Blacks in the Palmdale Freedom Coalition. And I just wanted to make that very clear. We do have, we are, we have Blacks, we have Latinos, we have Arabs. We have so many different ethnicities that definitely found problems with, with that other choice, with the selection of that city attorney. So, I just want to make that very clear. I, I think we can't have a blanket comment that Latinos and Blacks are accepting, were accepting of that choice. Thank you.
For the record, just state your name, please.
Yes, I'm sorry, Carol Ross.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Galena Davis.
Okay. And Mr. Flores, we have your LULAC decision paper on the edit. Thank you.
Hi, this is, I'm Galena Davis and I am part of the Palmdale Freedom Coalition. I do take issue with Mr. One and his comment. I think that it is irresponsible and not a wise choice to hire someone who has fired or actually filed a lawsuit against you. That doesn't, that doesn't look good and it doesn't bode well as far as integrity and the things of that nature. So, I want to speak to that. And I also, I do have some concerns with what I perceive as polarization of our races here in the city. I, I see a use of pitting race against race and that doesn't help a city come together. The coalition that I am a part of, we consider everyone equal. Usually, when, when groups divide races, it is not for the benefit of all. And since this city is comprised of many different nationalities, it just is not prudent to have someone to be able to push that type of agenda in the city. So, I wanted to make that comment that I would, I would greatly appreciate at least the opportunity to do the proper vetting of this attorney that you're considering and not just kind of ram him through. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers, Madam Speaker?
Not at this time.
Anybody online? Yes.
We have one hand raised. Eric Olson, feel free to unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Olson, we can hear you.
I, I would just like to say that I don't know why any special interest group on either side would have any say in the hiring of, of the attorney. Does the car dealers get a say? Does the little league get a say? Do I get a say? No, it's a personnel issue and it should be treated as such. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
That is all.
That it. All right. So, we need a presentation by the city attorney.
So, we'll now be a journey to closed session and we'll return hopefully by seven o'clock. We shall see.
All right. Thank you all for being here and you're welcome to come back.
IT, have we got Ms. Benton Court online? We do?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, thank you, I just wanted to make sure we're good. All right, so we will call the closed session back to order for the city attorney can please report out anything that is reportable, please. Nope, city attorney, there he is.
There we are. As far as the items for which I was in closed session, there was no reportable action, and I will let the city manager report on the city attorney item.
As to item 4.5 and 4.6, the city council provided direction to staff to enter into negotiations with Mr. Porter for interim city attorney services in his firm.
All right, thank you. All right, so that will, that will, we will close out the closed session meeting, and we'll go into the seven o'clock. Now, this is, so everybody understands, this is a special meeting, and so you'll notice there's a little bit of a change on the, on the public comments because it's limited by state law to the item that is specifically listed on the agenda for this evening as a special meeting notice. So, we're going to go ahead and do a pledge of allegiance, and then we'll do a moment of silence in honor of whomever you choose to honor, okay? So, go ahead and face the flag, and please join with me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, before we get started, I have a note from the staff, we're going, there's a, there was a recommendation that we had, we move the fee resolution, item number 13, public hearing, and continue that for the next meeting, is that correct? Okay, so I have a motion to continue item 13.1, do I have a, do I have a motion on that?
Yes.
I move it by Mr. Loa, do I have a second?
I second it.
Second by Mr. Correio, city clerk, please call and roll.
Mayor Chair Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Mayor Procham, Vice Chair, Chair Procham Loa?
Yes.
Council members, directors, members, commissioners, Caddiel?
Yes.
Benton Court?
Yes.
Prossing Sines?
Yes.
And Denny?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. All right, so, where are we at? All right, so I need a motion to, for a waiver, a full resolution, waiver, a full reading of resolutions and ordinances.
All moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Loa?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Frogasans, that's okay for the second exit attorney?
It would be best if it was a different method.
All right, let's go ahead and do that, council member, please.
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Correio, rules any doubt? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Benton Court, you okay?
Yep.
Okay, anybody opposed? Okay, did we do roll again, the second roll call? All right, why don't we go ahead and do that? I'm sorry, I tried to grab the item that the staff needed.
Mayor Chair Hoffbauer?
Here.
Mayor Procham, Vice Chair, Chair Procham Loa?
Here.
Council members, directors, members, commissioners, Caddiel?
Yes.
Benton Court?
Here.
Frogasines?
Here.
And Denny?
Here.
Thank you, we have a call.
And Mr. Bishop is absent this evening, so...
Have we moved to excuse him at the earlier session? So that continues now, right?
What's that?
We, we moved to excuse his absence at the earlier session, that would continue now.
All right, happy birthday, right? All right, all right, so now we have the public comment section, and I've been given this script to read off here. Pursuant to Government Code Section 5495, 4.3, members in a public are provided opportunities to address the city council. This is a public, this is meeting is a special meeting, therefore, you may address the council once per meeting during the public comments on any matter on the agenda. Please submit a speaker's form to the city clerk before this, before this portion of the meeting begins. As this is a special meeting, comments should not be made on items not on the agenda. To address the council regarding an item on the agenda, please provide that speaker's form to the city clerk before we start that item. Each person addressing the council is given up to three minutes to speak, with additional time, we usually double it, we have to use a translator. The amount of time may be adjusted by the chair. If you wish to provide information to the council, please provide the city clerk with seven copies, otherwise your materials will simply be added to the administrative record. If you're attending by phone, please press the star nine to raise your hand, if attending by personal computer, please click the raise your hand button, press star six to unmute yourself, stage naming can begin speaking when you're called. Okay, city clerk, do we have, oh wait, let me go to IT first, IT, you have any hands up?
Not at this time.
Thank you, city clerk?
Rich Gallego?
Rich?
Good evening, everyone. I want to speak about the budget, and specifically Measure AV, and the funding to some of these special interest groups. I want to first say that I know there are several groups who are deserving and do really good work in the community, that I would have no problem having the city fund with public money. As I expressed at the last meeting, the problem I have is groups, special interest groups that divide, special interest groups that divide by race specifically, and who are doing things that frankly, I think are in violation of the tax code. If you're a 501(c)(3), you're not supposed to be endorsing or opposing a political campaign, and that, as far as I'm aware, doesn't mean just an individual running for office, but there are campaigns, campaigns for other things, you know, laws that are being passed or considering being passed.
IT, have we got Ms. Benton Court online? We do?
Yes, I'm here.
Alright, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we're good. Alright, so we will call the closed session back to order for the city attorney can please report out anything that is reportable, please. Nope, city attorney, there he is.
There we are.
Okay.
As far as the items for which I was in closed session, there was no reportable action, and I will let the city manager report on the city attorney item.
As to item 4.5 and 4.6, the city council provided direction to staff to enter into negotiations with Mr. Porter for interim city attorney services and his firm.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so that will, that will, we will close out the closed session meeting, and we'll go into the seven o'clock. Now, this is, so everybody understands, this is a special meeting, and so you'll notice there's a little bit of a change on the, on the public comments because it's limited by state law to the item that is specifically listed on the agenda for this evening as a special meeting notice. So, we're gonna go ahead and do a pledge of allegiance, and then we'll do a moment of silence in honor of whomever you choose to honor, okay? So... Go ahead and face the flag, and please join with me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, before we get started, I have a note from the staff. We're going, there's a, there was a recommendation that we had, we move the fee resolution, item number 13, public hearing, and continue that for the next meeting, is that correct? Okay, so I have a motion to continue item 13.1, do I have a, do I have a motion on that? I move up by Mr. Loa, do I have a second?
I second it.
Second by Mr. Correio, city clerk, please call and roll.
Mayor Chair Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Mayor Procham, Vice Chair, Chair Procham Loa?
Yes.
Council members, directors, members, commissioners, Gallego?
Yes.
Benton Court?
Yes.
Rodgers-Sines?
Yes.
And Denny?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Alright, so, where are we at? Alright, so I need a motion to, for a waiver, a full resolution, waiver, a full reading of resolutions and ordinances.
All moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Loa?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Frogasans, that's okay for the second act of the attorney?
It would be best if it was a different method.
Alright, let's go ahead and do that. Council member, please?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Correio, ruse any doubt? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Benton Court, you okay?
Yep.
Okay, anybody opposed? Okay. Did we do roll again, the second roll call? Alright, why don't we go ahead and do that? I'm sorry, I tried to grab that item that the staff needed.
Mayor Chair Hoffbauer?
Here.
Mayor Procham, Vice Chair, Chair Procham Loa?
Here.
Council members, directors, members, commissioners, Gallego?
Yes.
Benton Court?
Here.
Frogasans?
Here.
And Denny?
Here.
Thank you, we have a comment.
And Mr. Bishop is absent this evening, so...
Have we moved to excuse him at the earlier session? So that continues now, right?
What's that?
We, we moved to excuse his absence at the earlier session, that would continue now.
Alright, happy birthday, right? Alright, alright, so now we have the public comment section, and I've been given a script to read off here. Pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-4.3, members in a public are provided opportunities to address the city council. This is a public, this is meeting is a special meeting, therefore, you may address the council once per meeting during a public comments on any matter on the agenda. Please submit a speaker's form to the city clerk before this, before this portion of the meeting begins. As this is a special meeting, comments should not be made on items not on the agenda. To address the council regarding an item on the agenda, please provide that speaker's form to the city clerk before we start that item. Each person addressing the council is given up to three minutes to speak, with additional time, we usually double it, we have to use a translator. The amount of time may be adjusted by the chair. If you wish to provide information to the council, please provide the city clerk with seven copies, otherwise your materials will simply be added to the administrative record. If you're attending by phone, please press the star nine to raise your hand, if attending by personal computer, please click the raise your hand button, press star six to unmute yourself, stage naming can begin speaking when you're called. Okay, city clerk, do we have, oh wait, let me go to IT first. IT, you have any hands up?
Not at this time.
Thank you, city clerk?
Rich Gallego?
Rich?
Good evening, everyone. I want to speak about the budget, and specifically Measure AV, and the funding to some of these special interest groups. I want to first say that I know there are several groups who are deserving and do really good work in the community, that I would have no problem having the city fund with public money. As I expressed at the last meeting, the problem I have is groups, special interest groups that divide, special interest groups that divide by race specifically, and who are doing things that frankly, I think are in violation of the tax code. If you're a 501(c)(3), you're not supposed to be endorsing or opposing a political campaign, and that, as far as I'm aware, doesn't mean just an individual running for office, but there are campaigns for other things, you know, laws that are being passed or considering being passed. Specifically, some of these groups, I believe, have ties to Councilman Correio's campaign. I and a stream of other folks came up here last time and asked him to recuse himself from the dispersment process, I will do so again right now. Councilmen, you may be thinking that there's some fine line that can be walked by saying, well, if they work for this organization, then they come and work my campaign as a private individual, and you might be able to escape legal jeopardy by, by using that kind of an argument, but I have to tell you, it doesn't pass the sniff test. It looks corrupt, because at its core, it is corrupt. So I'm asking you again to recuse yourself from that process of dispersment. Another thing I want to mention is that, last week, just like we did a few minutes ago, everybody started by pledging allegiance to that flag, and what it represents. I have a hard time understanding how somebody can do that, and then turn around and give money to an organization whose very existence is reliant on keeping us divided by race. How do you do that? And again, I'm sorry to be picking on you, but you revealed your cards at a prior city council meeting, Councilman Correio, when you said on the record that you were elected to represent the Latino community. Thankfully, Councilman Loa immediately corrected you and said that you were elected to represent all Palmdale citizens, but as I said, you've already shown your hand. So, there was also comment made that said that, among other things, and I won't go into the racist diatribe, diatribe that was nonsense, but an individual also said that if they didn't get money, that was taxation without representation. I just want to remind him and anybody else who's listening, you are his representatives, so are the people at the county, state, and federal level. The Constitution does not guarantee these special, him or these other people, a special interest group to represent them, and it most certainly does not guarantee any of these special interest groups funding from public monies.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you very much.
Well, I'm trying to, because we heard a lot of, we understand, we understand where, you know, pretty much, I think, where folks are coming from, we heard about, about three hours, two hours of testimony previously. So, if we can, to the extent possible, let's try to, let's try to provide us some new information, or information that is like a change to something that was on the, on the budget or the agenda, just so we can, we gotta, we gotta vote on this thing tonight, or nothing gets paid starting Monday, so, alright, so I'm just, I'm just asking, okay? So, city clerk?
Jason Zink?
Mr. Zink?
Oh, what you're doing to limit public comment is wrong.
Yes, that's not the item tonight, sir, the item is the budget.
Oh, it doesn't matter.
It does matter.
This is my three minutes. As a representative of the people of the city, I'm, what you're doing to limit public comment is wrong, as a representative of the people of this city, there was no public input on the last city budget hearing.
Um, Mr. Mayor, so you're aware, you do have the authority to require him to speak only on the budget, because that is the topic of the...
There was no public comment at last May public hearing.
If it relates to the budget, you certainly have the right to speak.
I know, it does.
Okay, very good.
Trust me, I don't do things just to make you guys upset, or anything like that, I just want everyone to be able to be heard, and everybody, and the agenda be done right. How can you have people comment on an agenda item when nobody's even heard about the budget from the staff? You're having a horse before, you're doing things backwards, but you should know better, you've been in public office for 30 years, 20 years, 15 years on the city council. What is, what's going on here, Mr. Hoffbauer?
It was, it's been discussed previously, but go ahead.
How can you talk, how can the public, or you, talk about something you haven't heard from the staff yet? It's common sense, you don't even have to be smart.
I have to just come to the meetings when it was discussed.
I know, but the reason you're trying to limit public comment is because you're upset with this, but what you should be upset with is all of you, you're the ones that made the problems with J.J. Murphy, bottom of a million dollar house, didn't vote on the mandate.
Let's keep it honest.
I'm just telling you guys, you guys caused this, we didn't cause this, we want to give to the city. This rift is all because of you guys, the lawsuits, everything, you guys have to take responsibility. Now, 60% of this city is built, that leaves, and 20% is left, that's landlocked, you can't do nothing with it, that only leaves 20% of residential and commercial, take away the industrial properties, that are left to do special projects, that's like trail systems, parks, connecting. I was on G-PAC for two years, all we talked about is walkable, rideable communities, okay? Right now, there's the surpluses, there's grants out there, we should be hiring and doing all these park projects right now and secure that funding. Why aren't we? Why are we saving money? Why did you guys take $9 million of AV measure, AV funds and give to the sheriff department? So you have more money in the general fund to do what you want to do without a citizen oversight committee? That's almost evil, that's evil! I can't believe this is going on in my city! My people, I, I really love you guys, I respect you guys, but there's something wrong.
I cut him off, so we're giving him another 30 seconds, go ahead, Jason.
Alright, I just want, I want Nuno Lake done, I want the land around Palmdale Lake done, I want Palm Menthol Park done, I want Almergo's White Way and Trail done, I want Rancho Vista Trail done, from the AV Mall to Marie Kerr Park, so people can ride around and do things. I want a lake, man-made lake in Lake Palmdale, so we can also recharge the ground table and make Palmdale more beautiful. I want the off-ramps and on-ramps landscaped.
That's coming, by the way, we got that coming.
I want you guys to paint the walls one color, adopt city colors, and that paint, that way I can go to Home Depot, I know the city color and I can paint it.
Alright, thanks, Jason, we got it.
Alright, but the thing is with Measure AV funds, last thing, we should be taking that 20 million and using that to leverage for other grants, to make it 40 million annually.
Preaching to the Pope, I agree with you on that, thank you.
But we've been off to a very slow start.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. City clerk?
Ruth Sanchez?
Ruth?
Good evening, city council, I'm mayor. First of all, I want to go ahead and say that this morning, I was in a meeting with the, the state of California, and there was a lot of funding coming for the An House, and I asked if the city of Palmdale had applied for that, and they said no, not at all. And last time, in last city council meeting, there were some comments made, which is, I respect those comments because there were questions about why is it that all of a sudden homeless individuals are coming here, and, and it's, and I can respect that, just like Mr. Gallego says, you know what, there's organizations that only deal with certain groups, well, as you all know, this is not something that we're just jumping into doing, been doing this for over 17 years, not just here in Palmdale, but it through the whole Antelope Valley. The city of Palmdale has never given us a penny until last year, 95,000, and if you think we're $95,000, we're gonna be able to solve an issue that you guys got $22 million and have not been able to fix, you guys really do have a serious issue on that. Another thing I want to say is, also, there's a lot of money out there that the city of Palmdale is not applying, the city of Palmdale is not getting, you know, all of these fundings, and a lot of the different things that we're doing, and again, I'm in these meetings with the state of California, you know, you yourself, Mayor Hoffbauer, you were in Washington, I hope that you went and did something good for us, for the city of Palmdale, since I am sure we're the one who spent the money for you to be in Washington, I hope you're coming back with some solutions, because there's funding, federal funding, that we have not applied for. And I want to utilize that funding for the organizations, I know some other people were talking about other organizations are just asking for 20,000, you guys can go ahead and ask, SAVE's, it takes $2,800 for only one room at a hotel for one month, so 20,000, if we were to ask for 20,000, it's not gonna work. And I've been asking, let's go ahead and build these tiny homes, it's only, actually, I, I'm flying to Utah, they're only $15,000, and it comes with kitchen, bathrooms, and air conditioners, why are we spending all of this money on other things? Let's go ahead and do it, and it's not like this building that'll come, they're already here, it's just a matter of time before they're in your front door, okay? On the, on the west side where you two live, it's only a matter of time, they're actually, as a matter of fact, there's some already out there, so let's go ahead and do something, but listen, I'm not just asking them for housing, let's do a wraparound services, so that we can get them, and then, so they can start working and get them to be self-sufficient themselves. A lot of them are not able to work because they don't have IDs, okay? I know some of them were providing some IDs, I know we're working with SAVE on some of the vouchers, but you know how hard it is when we're only relying on one hotel? You know, just today, you know, Patricia can tell you, we were on the verge of having a four-year-old child out on the street, because the parent dad had, you know, she did have an attitude, but can you imagine having your four-year-old grandchild out on the street in this heat right now? I don't think you can, and that's what I'm facing on all of those different things. So I would appreciate if you guys actually do what you guys need to do. One other thing before I go, and this is relating to you, last time, I made a complaint, the fact that none of the, you know, all the vouchers, not the voucher, I'm sorry, all the speaking cards that I was giving to Ms. Smith, they were all being put in different order. I did request it and I asked, is there a process? And I was told in an email saying that per your request, mayor, there is no, there is no, there is no actual, no, no statute, but here, I'm gonna read it to you, because I don't want to miss one.
Wait, you gotta go on over.
No, this is important, let me tell you.
No, we can discuss this a little more later, there's...
No, I don't want to have coffee at 6:00 in the morning, but the thing of the matter is, there is no process.
Turn the mic, please.
There is no process for that? That is a really big problem.
There is, and I think there's a misunderstanding.
Your city clerk told me that it's not, and it's for you, for your request.
Thank you, no, well, I think, I think there's a misunderstanding, thank you. Who's the next speaker, please? And on the, on the homeless meeting, was somebody from the city in on that meeting?
No, nobody.
Okay, so do us a favor, when you know about that stuff, I've been, and talked to the governor, his housing guru, the young guy, Jason, I think his name is, and I've been in contact with him, but I didn't know about it either, so let somebody know, okay? Alright, city clerk?
You guys lose job to know?
Well, you know what, my crystal ball was on my desk, so... Okay, who's your...
Abraham Salsedo.
I'm sorry?
Abraham Salsedo.
Abraham, your, your turn, sir.
How's everybody doing?
Ethan, sir?
Um, I'm coming to speak as far as the budget and regarding the Measure AV, I think at this time, I mean, for me, myself, I voted for two people that's on this council, and, you know, I believe you guys have a responsibility to listen to the people and act on what the people are asking for you guys to do, and with Measure AV, I believe we, you guys need to either table it or figure out some way to vet a lot of this. There's some of the special interest groups that are in there, that I did about 30 minutes worth of research, I was able to find a lot of questionable stuff as far as, you know, federal money that they received, and what they did with money, and how it was allocated when it was COVID-19 money, and how it was used, and we need to really be careful how we use, how, where, how we allocate the money to be spent, as far as with some of the special interest groups, and I just want to remind you guys what the, what the Measure AV money was supposed to be for, is that, you know, to maintain 911 emergency response times, keep public parks open, safe, and clean, it is to support services for local water resources, to repair the streets and potholes, it is for programs and activities for at-risk youth and support mental health, you know, it is to support food, shelter, and other services to citizens who need a helping hand, it is to upgrade emergency communications, emergency preparedness, support community by, based policing and crime prevention, I mean, I, I'm out there in, working out in the streets all the time, and the stuff that I get to see out there, we really need some more help with policing out there. I know there's a, there's certain movements out there where they, they, they want to remove policing, I believe in like West Hollywood, their crime rate went up 137%, and yet they decided to defund the police, which is absurd, I don't want that in our, in our city, I want to make sure that some of this money that we voted for, Measure AV money is being spent correctly, and I believe you guys need to do your due diligence and do the research on some of these groups, you know, and make sure that you guys are doing the right thing on how you allocate these funds, because the taxpayers agreed to one thing, we need to make sure that we're doing the right thing, okay?
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Mario presents.
Is that the last one? Okay, so Mario's the last speaker.
Alright.
There you go.
Came right on time. So I want to talk to you guys about the budget and the accountability, making sure that, kind of echoing what I just heard, making sure that these groups who are receiving their monies are actually using the money appropriately, and willingly submitting things like 990, do you guys know what a 990 is? Anyone who's a 501(c)(3) has to fill out a 990 either easy, if they, if they do less than $500,000 of fundraising, or a 990 if they're doing more than $500,000 of fundraising. My question is, is of these groups that have requested Measure AV money, how many of them willingly submitted a 990, their information? This is, if I want to apply for a federal housing loan, I have to give my tax information as a private individual, these people are getting grants, which is tax money, free and clear, with no recourse, at least that's what it's supposed to be, so wouldn't we want to do our due diligence, research these people, front and back, inside and out, and make sure that these programs are going to people in the community, people in the community who should be in the community, people who are deserving of it, children, children, high schoolers, Americans, period, people who are, who are struggling, I see American veterans sleeping on the streets, but I have groups saying, we're gonna help the illegal immigrant unhoused person, well, where is their priority? Is their priority with the American veteran? Obviously not if their entire focus is on a cultural, religious, or racial or ethnic group, no group whatsoever should have a focus on race as its primary goal, that group in and of itself is racist, I said that before, whether it's Black Lives Matter, Black Panthers, Mecha, Chirla, Salva, any group that says, I'm gonna put Latinos above everybody else, immediately is saying, I'm not going to pay attention to any of these other demographics. I don't see Salva championing American, America First policies, I don't see Salva saying, hey, you know what, what about the Americans here that are living on the streets, are they focused on that, or do they even care about that? But we're willing to give them $300,000 of our tax money without any sort of a rope or tie to research them? No, absolutely not, my parents immigrated to this country when they were very young, and they gave me the opportunity and the voice to stand up here and speak and say, I have never experienced racism here in Palmdale in my 30 years of living here as a community member, I was the first family to move off of 30th and P before the Vons, before Marie Kerr Park, and that community has not gotten less diverse, it's only gotten more diverse, and I can tell you, through the diversity and through my personal experiences, there is no racism here, and the groups that should be getting our money are groups that put Americans first.
Thank you, all good comments, so we will move on to item 11, and this is a joint public hearing of all the agencies that are out there, including Housing Authority, and Civic Authority, Industrial Development Authority.
Mayor, there appears to be one more comment online, I'm not sure if you want to receive that or not.
Oh, I thought we moved on, okay?
Eric Olson, feel free to unmute yourself.
I want to talk about the item that everybody's talking about tonight, and claiming that there's no transparency that was given in this Measure AV process, and that is not true. There was a workshop given specifically on the process, there was a presentation given to council, there was a presentation given to the AV Oversight Committee, it was laid out online, 84 groups applied, they were screened, 64 were qualified, there was a review process where they were scored, every single piece of paper in that process is available via public records request, that scoring narrowed it down to 29. There was a process, it was transparent, staff did their research, they did a great job, they worked long hours, they did fantastic. If you have suggestions of how they can improve it next time, let's talk about that, but let's not take it out on 29 groups that want to do good for the city of Palmdale, there's a financial storm on the horizon, and these groups help us weather that storm, and we have the money now, let's get it out now, and take suggestions on how to do better going forward, but let's just do good things.
Very good, thank you, sir. Okay, IT?
No more raising.
Okay, motion to close public comments?
All moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Hearing done, so ordered. Okay, now, I am 11.1. Okay, now, I am eleven point one. Uh, this is a public hearing and review of proposed joint resolutions, number, well, how about some staff member read all that, so I don't screw it up.
Mayor and Council, our Director of Finance, Janelle Sampson, will give you a abbreviated version of the presentation she provided back on May eighteenth.
Thank you. Somebody gonna read that title and everything for me, please?
Yes, I'll read the resolution. This is a joint resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale, the successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Palmdale. The Palmdale Civic Authority, the Housing Authority of the City of Palmdale, the Industrial Development Authority, Palmdale Airport Authority of the City of Palmdale, and the Palmdale Financing Authority, approving and adopting the City of Palmdale's annual budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, and approving revenue and expenditure adjustments to fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two.
Excellent, okay, you have a report for us?
So I do have a presentation, so good evening, Mayor, members of the council and commissioners. I will just start this off by saying that at the May eighteenth City Council meeting, I presented a very detailed um presentation of the budget. And um what I have for you tonight is a follow-up to that presentation, and we are seeking the council's approval of uh the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three proposed budget. Okay, this next slide, very familiar to, to all of us, uh this is the Palmdale Strategic Plan. Um, the vision statement to be a, a high-performing organization, providing world-class service that enhances the quality of life through innovation, passion, engagement and collaboration, and below that are the goals of the city. I, I will not read all of this. Next slide, please. On this next slide, this is the citywide budget summary. Uh what I've done here is, um because the May eighteenth Council meeting presented a very detailed view of the budget, what I'm showing on this slide is changes that have occurred in what's before you tonight from May eighteenth. So the highlight here for citywide, which covers all funds, is a an increase in expenditures and transfers out of eight point one million dollars. What that is primarily due to is funding or programming of ARPA funds that were identified between May eighteenth and today. As staff have done additional research and identified programs, working with our consultants, identifying programs that would qualify for those ARPA funds. We'll go through each of those projects a little later. Next slide, please. This next slide is a, an overview of the general fund budget summary. Um, again, the changes are listed to the far right, you'll see that middle column is what we're proposing for adoption tonight. Um, what, what you see in that first column, or I'm sorry, the first line there, there is a change in the beginning fund balance, that is due to some changes to the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two projections. Um, for some projects, uh one of those projects was uh five hundred and sixty thousand dollars that was shifted um from ARPA funds, it was deemed not to qualify, so it was shifted back to the general fund. Um, something that had already begun, uh a film studio project. Um, other increases are due to salaries and benefits, um which are a result of retirements and separations and um those accrued leave payouts, um so that was those changes. The expenditures and transfers outlined, you'll see a, um a decrease of seven hundred and fifteen thousand. That is due to an item that was shifted over to ARPA funds, so that was identified as qualifying under those funds for uh land acquisition and entitlement. Next slide, please. I'm sorry, are there any questions on these slides so far?
Uh, could we go back to the first uh, the first item we presented? Okay, that one, okay, so, it's showing, are we showing a deficit in the uh proposed for adoption for twenty-twenty-three of twenty-six million dollars? Can you explain that?
Yes, of course. It does show a deficit, and that is taking the current year revenues over the current year expenditures only. So that deficit is not accounting for the beginning fund balance, so we are in a positive position, and you'll see the bottom line there. The ending fund balance of a hundred and eighty-five million. So although we have citywide expenditures exceeding revenues, we are overall still in a good place. Um, many of those, um or much of the, the deficit presented there is due to special revenue funds, uh transportation funds, CIPs, or grant funds that carry from year to year.
And we're still maintaining our reserves as uh
Absolutely.
I just wanted to make sure the public understands, we see a big uh parentheses there, it looks like a big negative item, but in fact uh if you look at the bottom line, it's, it's actually positive.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on, on the next uh, um slide.
Next slide.
The bottom one here, the estimated ending balance is fifty-nine point five million, and then the reserve is twenty-eight point seven million. Is that in addition to this fifty-nine point five million, or is it inclusive of fifty-nine point five million?
No, the total ending fund balance is the fifty-nine million, and then the reserve would be the portion that is held back, reserved of that fifty-nine. Any other questions?
Laura? Okay.
All right, moving on, this next slide here is measure A V. And um just as presented uh at the May eighteenth meeting, this is a high level on your screen here. The detailed version of that budget is in your agenda packets. Um, so there were very few changes made to this budget, and the, those changes that were presented here were also taken before the measure A V Oversight Committee on May twenty-fifth. Um, so one of those changes is a hundred thousand dollar increase on the public safety line item. Um, and that was for animal care services, um to um continue the, the spay-neuter services that were begun this year. And hopefully add some, some additional services such as microchipping in the coming year. Um, for this item, we are also presenting um or recommending a fifteen percent reserve for measure A V, um this was also presented to their committee, and they were um on board with that. Their formal reserve policy calls for ten percent, but again, we are proposing a fifteen percent. Any questions there?
Hearing done.
Okay, next slide.
Next slide?
Next slide, please. This next slide is the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Uh, these are the federal funds, the City of Palmdale was awarded thirty-five point four million dollars, you'll see that on the top line there. Um, so this, this slide accounted for the eight point one million dollars, so many of those projects citywide were added under ARPA funds and determined to be qualifying here. I will just point out that the city received the first half of this thirty-five point four million dollars in July of twenty-twenty-one, and we are expecting the second round. It, it was initially supposed to be June, but we haven't received it yet, so very soon, very shortly. Um, so we are, um, I'll go through some of the changes here from the May eighteenth meeting. On the public um, public health and safety line, uh we have three million dollar increase um for some public facility health and safety projects. Um, we've added two million dollars for an emergency operations center relocation. I, I'm sorry, we took that out, we actually shifted that out of ARPA because it was deemed not to qualify. We have two million dollars under the negative economic impacts that was removed, um this was something that was presented in another category. Um, and is proposed to support the CCA in the form of energy credits to qualifying customers. Uh, we have a two million dollars proposed for affordable housing projects. Eight hundred thousand of that would support homes for families, and one point two would be programmed for other affordable housing projects, which would be brought back before the council, before those are expended. Under the premium pay line item, we are proposing four thousand dollars per qualifying full-time employee and five hundred dollars per qualifying part-time employee. Uh, we are proposing general fund to supplement portions of that for unqualifying, um you know, based on ARPA regulations. Um, so that's a portion of that. We are also proposing um two hundred thousand for an incentive that would um help us incentivize our, our lifeguards. So uh as you may or may not know, we are currently, um, well, the nation is experiencing a, a national lifeguard shortage, so we're our Parks and Recreation Departments are struggling to fill those positions. We are currently down, I believe, thirty-nine positions this year.
Could you repeat that number, please?
Thirty-nine.
Okay, so that's why the pools aren't open more, and we've all stressed, we want the pools open more, we want more free swim time. Parks and Recs can't do that unless we have adequate lifeguards out there. Otherwise, our insurance won't cover it, so if you guys know anybody who wants to be a lifeguard. Eric, Carrie, wave your hands. Those are the guys, send them over there. Okay.
Um, so, so those dollars that are allocated here under the premium pay are for those purposes, um in those, those programs.
And he's a bonus, so signing bonus, bring him in.
Yeah, it, it is outlined in your staff report, um it would be a tier structure based on hours worked, more of a performance-based bonus. Are there any questions?
And that's just for that particular year, this doesn't go on year after year, just so the public knows.
That's correct, it would be a period of, I believe it's May twenty-twenty-two through September, just this season.
Yeah, um. So we're supposed to receive the second uh phase of the thirty-five million, is it gonna be another thirty-five million?
Uh, no, let me correct you on that.
Well, you know what, we've got a government that's just printing money, so why not?
The city was allocated thirty-five point four million total, we received seventeen point seven. Already, and we, we will receive the other half.
Okay.
So, so that money is allocated out over time, you don't get it all at once.
We don't get it all at once.
Correct, okay, that's good.
Questions to which he knows the answer. Now, uh but we have a, a limitation on the time which, in which it has to be spent.
Yes, we do, so we, we must allocate those funds by twenty-twenty-four, and they must be expended by twenty-twenty-six.
Twenty-twenty-six, okay, and currently, with all of the items that you've discussed, uh there's uh seven million two hundred and five thousand dollars that could be used for other projects.
Correct, that amount would have to be programmed. Absolutely, yes.
Okay, and you have a good handle as to what that is?
Yes, we do.
Anything else, or next slide? Next slide?
Slide, okay, this next slide goes over the capital improvement program. And what we have shown here is fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, ninety-eight point eight million dollars in capital improvement programs or projects. Uh, this is about five million dollars um increased from what was presented before you on May eighteen. And some of those projects that account for that are three million dollars for the public facility energy efficiency project that I just mentioned under ARPA. As well as the affordable housing projects of roughly two million dollars.
So, Janelle?
Yes.
I, I have to jump in for a minute, I would be remiss if I did not. Um, I just wanna point out, under the capital improvement projects, that the brand-new Avenue S and Thirty-Fifth Street intersection on the south side continues to flood like a wild thing. And that's a brand-new street, so when we're looking at these funds, we gotta find some money to fix Avenue S and get rid of that flooding. Just wanted to bring that up, thank you.
Thank you.
Although I pray for rain.
Are there any questions on the capital improvement program? Okay.
Just like to make, reiterate that we wanna get that um, the, that um list, CIP list, and updates list on a regular basis, I think I'm two months behind. Because we're, we're voting on items here, and we don't know where the status is on all of those, so just a reminder.
And, and Mayor, it might be in our best interest to prove, you know, that we are doing our best to be transparent. There's no reason we can't post the capital improvement um projects on our city website, the public should know what projects and where and when they're coming. There's no reason in the world why we can't make that a public document.
I, I think it is, I said, I'm just trying to make sure that we get the updates, you know, on it, that's it. Yeah, thank you. Back to you.
Next slide, please. I think that, that is actually it. So before I conclude this presentation, I do just want to address a request that was presented to us on May eighteenth uh by Mr. Corio. Uh, we were directed at that meeting to look into the fe- the feasibility of salary increases um for staff here. Uh, what we have come back with, it's not included in the budget currently, but we are seeking your direction here, and we have a recommendation uh that we would like to propose of providing an additional seven percent COLA to all staff on top of the three percent that is included in this budget. What that would do is bring staff to a total of ten percent salary increases to help them respond to the impacts of inflation, which is currently at roughly eight point six percent. Um, the fiscal impact associated with that in fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three is roughly two point three million dollars. So I just wanted to bring that before you for your consideration and discussion.
Okay, I have some discussion on that. So you're saying that would be a ten percent COLA increase, that would be cost of living increase? And, and what is the average merit increase on top of the COLA?
For staff that, that are qualifying for a merit increase, um based on their range, it is five percent.
So they have, so they would be making fifteen percent increase. And, and I bring this up because I am elected to be a fiduciary of the taxpayers' money. And I work for the county of Los Angeles, and across the board, L.A. County civilians are getting about two percent. That's it, no COLA, no merit raise, we negotiate and we get two percent for three years, for total of six percent over three years. And now we're offering city employees up to fifteen percent in one year. I'm shocked.
Mayor, can we hold off?
Yes, different, di- different union, I think, so.
Can we hold off, can we hold off on that part of it?
So.
Come back to it, come back to the, to that particular item. I'd like to bring up some other items.
Well, I, I think this is right here, right now, so. I don't necessarily have a problem with, with the, a salary adjustment, simply because I talked to Rhonda from time to time. And where are we at with filling these positions? Where are we at with the responses, and I'm gonna, I, I've got the answer because we where are we at with, how many people have responded back to the ads we have and stuff like this? This is kind of the end of the earth when it comes to uh, uh job opportunities for people to relocate out here.
You know what, Mayor? You know, I, I, I'm gonna interrupt you because I can't tell you how I'm gonna. So I, I'm shocked at how poorly we are at recruiting. We had a taco festival right in front of City Hall for two days in a row. There was no employment booth for the City of Palmdale there, there was, there was nothing there to recruit people who might be looking for a job. We have got to do a better job recruiting people. I don't know where we're putting ads in for, for, for these jobs, but I talked to my neighbors, my residents, students at the college, they don't know anything about jobs at the City of Palmdale. We've gotta do a better job. And so we can throw all the money we want at these positions, but if nobody knows these positions exist, nobody's gonna apply for them.
Okay, well, I, I can tell you that I think today I got two or three things that come through, cuz I subscribe to a number of these uh job boards, just to see what comes through. Uh, and I got a couple for the city today as well. Uh, so I think that, I think you're right, I think that there's some other options. You and I, Rhonda and I have discussed the fact that, like for some of these professional positions, there's may, maybe some other uh, o- other magazines or other um, uh professional associations that have job opportunities on it. And so I'll agree with you that we, we, we can, maybe we can do a better job, but when we do get applicants, and even when job offers are being made, they're going, nah, you know what, it's not worth it to me to move, so. I, I think that we have to be, and I'm gonna be honest with you, so if you take a look at some of the other county agencies, uh, some of those uh COLAs have been fairly substantial to cover this, this current inflationary rate with many of the county unions right now, so.
Are we discussing it? Can I comment on it?
Yeah, I, I just wanna get this, being that she brought that up, so we can go back and
I'd like, I'd like to move forward with motions, if, if this is the appropriate time. And, and what I'd like to do is to make a motion on measure A V, which is on page ninety-nine of one hundred and two, community grant programs. And my motion would be to delete that item from the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. And the reason for it is that there has been too much controversy amongst staff, if not the community itself. And I think that the program looked very attractive in the beginning, when it was first proposed. Uh, I don't think it meshes at all with the original intent of measure A V. when it was first proposed. Uh, I don't think it meshes at all with the original intent of Measure A.D. And what it has done is to cause division within the city at a time when we least need to have these divisions. So I propose to make a motion to delete that item from the twenty-two, twenty-three agenda, uh, budget.
Well, um, I thought we were discussing the, um, salary increase.
Wait, jumped in with a motion?
Yeah.
So is there a second?
Well, before there's a second, there's still more discussion.
But yeah, but we can, we can have discussion on that, on that particular motion. If there's a second to that motion, otherwise, we move on.
Okay.
Whatever else, so.
Okay.
So is there a second or not?
So, so before we make the motion, can we talk about it? Because I, I think there's enough money in, in Measure A.D. to support more than just the twenty-nine, um, groups that have asked for it. I agree with the speakers that said that there has to be better vetting. Um, I, I think we kinda need to go back to the drawing board. Uh, put, put more money into the grant program to cover more of the groups perhaps. But we certainly have to vet these groups to make sure that they, they follow the mission and the philosophy of the city of Palmdale. Um, you know, we, we certainly, you know, defunding the police is an issue, or cancel the contract, whatever you wanna call it. We support our law enforcement in Palmdale. We wanna bring, bring crime down and we wanna have creative ways of your community-based policing.
So is that, is that a second?
What, what exactly was the motion? I'm sorry.
The motion is to delete the, um, on page ninety-nine of one hundred and two of the staff report, the community grants program, uh, which is allocated for, uh, two million dollars to delete that item. And I, and my proposal is, Ms. Betancourt, that instead, we have a program of sponsorships that could be operated through the, um, city manager's office. That would do the vetting, that would do the investigating, that would do, uh, assurance that the money is appropriately being spent. But what, by whatever groups are, uh, decided by the city manager's office. So, my proposal at this point is to delete it and then make a subsequent motion, uh, that these funds instead be directed to the city manager, uh, for determination of sponsorships and partnerships.
Uh, Mayor Chris and Loa, would, would that mean we could still have the Measure A.D. committee? Or would it be the sole, um, act of the city manager?
I think, I think.
I think it does include the, in other words, the Measure A.D. committee is a standing committee that the, that the voters voted on and approved. So I think that, it doesn't touch that at all.
Okay. And, and the reason I'm asking is, you know, I, I think that's probably a good idea. I think we need to take it out of the hands of the council members so that we're not accused of playing favorites, we're not accused of sliding money to our friends or to our supporters and that type of thing. I think perhaps that is the best policy is to have the, the non-elected people, I mean.
So I think, I think Laura, I think you're, you're right, um, on a lot of that. Uh, except, I don't know, I can't speak for everybody here, but I kinda deliberately didn't go to the Measure A.D. meetings. Specifically, to, to allow them to deal with these issues, uh, on, on their own basis. And I stayed out of the city manager's office when they, and the staff, when they were dealing with these things, to avoid that exact scenario. But let's, let's, let's figure out here. So, Mr. Mr. Loa's made a motion to delete that item from this year's budget.
For twenty-two, twenty-three.
Revisit it later. Is there a second for that motion?
So, so I, oh, uh, before I vote, I wanna see, see how this works. So we take it, we, we take the line item out and it goes into the general fund for the city manager to distribute those funds, correct?
It goes back to the general fund and then there would be a subsequent, um, motion made either tonight or at a sec, a subsequent time to, uh, allow the city manager to handle that two million dollars for sponsorships and, uh, working with, with, uh, traditional partnerships that the city has had over the years.
And, and the, and the city manager would have the opportunity to go, go and look at all of the people that have applied and review the ones that were rejected and the amounts that were approved.
It, it would open it up. It would open it up, but within the interim city manager's, uh, limit, which at, at the moment is a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna second that motion because I think it should be from a non-bias group that makes the decision on these. And I think as elected officials, it can be troublesome for us, um, especially with the, you know, the, the pressure that some, some groups put on people. Um, I think we have the, a Measure A.D. committee. I think we have an application process that needs to be cleaned up and tightened up. So I'm gonna second his motion.
Okay, you have a motion and I have a second.
I have more discussion.
Yeah, and, and, uh, that was a good call for that.
Yeah.
So.
I, I do agree, however, I think that we'll be setting the maximum amount for applications to be at a hundred thousand dollars, which is the authority for the city manager. So I think that it would be best for us to, um, make the grant applications at a maximum of a hundred thousand dollars, because that's the authority that the city manager has. Otherwise, if somebody applies for one hundred and one thousand dollars, that is gonna come back to us again. So that really doesn't do any good.
Yeah.
Because of, uh.
My motion is simply to delete this and then we'll leave all the devil and the details to subsequent discussions.
Okay. Anybody else have any?
I'll agree to that. I'll make a substantive motion that we add the language, that the grant application maximum would be a hundred thousand dollars to avoid having applicants coming in with applications and a hundred and one thousand dollars, which ultimately will come with cancel. That just defeats the purpose.
Okay, Juan, and, and are we saying that we're only going to do the grant application once a year or once every six months? Do we know?
Alright, so here's, so here's, that's, that's part of the problem we're running into right now, is things will come up later in the year. Uh, this is an all-or-nothing deal that comes up right now. You know, I was gonna suggest that as these things are moving forward, that we get, uh, quarterly updates on what's been accomplished and then a disbursement request for the next quarter. I mean, that way that there's full transparency, you know what they, what each group has spent. And I don't wanna, again, I don't wanna get down into weeds, but there's been all this discussion about where's it really going? And I filled out the nine ninety and I've done the nine ninety N and all that kinda stuff, and there's no detail in those. It just says, I haven't spent that much money, so, well. So, and I think that was included in the packages. Wasn't there like a IRS form or something in that area? So they got that, but it doesn't say anything. It just, we got this much money and unless you spend, oh, unless you received over a certain amount or spent over X amount, it's gonna be relevant, so.
Yeah, I, you know, I would.
Mister Mayor, um, so I wanna make clear that what's before you is the budget. It is not specifically how you spend the money and which groups you're spending the money to and all that. The question is, should this be in the budget or not?
Right.
The method of how you decide to disperse that money is a separate question. What I'm hearing is, there's still a desire to disperse the money. The question is how. So, if, if the desire is to keep the money, you would not change the budget. So therefore, you would approve it as a, but if you desire to not distribute any money, then you would change the budget to remove that from the budget.
Right. And my motion is to remove it from the budget and then figure out what we're gonna do with that money later.
So my substantive motion does not apply because it's not the budget duration.
That's a how question, I think.
So is that a housekeeping issue that, or that could, does some, some to do motion apply? To, that any, for further action on this item would be limited to a hundred thousand dollars per fiscal year?
So I think what we could do is we, um, y- you could indicate that your general sense is that that is the intent of the council and then we could come back.
I'm ready to second that right now.
Okay, so, so my suggestion would be that you just indicate that that is the general sense of the council and we will come back at a future meeting when you're talking about how the funds are dispersed. I don't wanna get into the how, I wanna talk about what's in the budget.
Okay.
I think that my substantive motion qualifies for that same reason then, because we're not discussing the how. We're discussing the top amount, which is the authority of the city managers, that a hundred thousand. That, I think that's applicable. We're not discussing how to disperse it, we're discussing, including in the motion Mr. Loa made, the maximum amount, amount being a hundred thousand, which is the authority of the city manager.
I, I think, I think that sort of gets us into a, a kind of an ambiguous area.
Okay.
That probably goes beyond the intent of the, of the motion, which is simply to delete this item.
Okay.
And then later we can discuss whatever way we can go with it.
I think we got a way to get there at some point.
I agree, but however, just beware that ultimately, some of those grant applications will end up right here.
Right.
If we don't put a, a, a maximum authority that this.
Well, I, you know, and I think there's a very valid point being made here about the, the political pressures being applied from every direction. And I think that kinda puts the city manager in an awkward spot. I wanted to try to find someone that is a grant, um, an analyst firm that, like, we use to, uh, submit grants and things for us to provide that backup to the staff.
And I think that would be.
When it gets over to her.
That, that would be open to discussion in, in the future.
Okay.
Uh, nobody's foreclosing that. Right now, we're just removing this particular item from the budget.
Alright, so the, the question is on the table, call for the, the question here. The question is to remove that line item, the, the, the allocation for that line item, return it to the general fund and bring the item back for further discussion later. And my cap, did I encapsulate that for you, sir?
Well, my motion is simply to delete that item from the budget. And of course, what the direction that's being given is that we're gonna bring that back and have further discussion on how that's going to be dealt with.
Correct. So then, uh, we, I think, I think there's general consensus, unless I hear otherwise, there is general consensus from the council that we will bring back an item consistent with the conversation that we had about, we'll talk about the how. So the sole item is to delete this line from the budget.
Correct.
Not, not from the budget, but from the, the allocation.
The allocation from the budget.
In the general fund.
Correct.
Yes, of course.
Alright, so that's the motion, city clerk. And there was a second, there was a motion by Mr. Loa. The second is by Ms. Betancourt. City clerk, can you call a roll, please?
Mayor Chair Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim, Vice Chair, Chair Pro Tim Loa.
Yes.
Council members, directors, members, commissioners, Corio?
No.
Betancourt?
Yes.
Frogga Sines?
Yes.
And Denny?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. So, we've still got some work cut out for us. Let's try to keep the conversation civil as we move forward. Everybody? Everybody?
And, and Mayor, don't forget that we can actually increase that amount if we wanted to. We don't have to leave it at what it was.
Well, I think we have to take a look at, at, at the budget.
Win-win for everybody.
Moving forward here.
And I have a, a, an item, uh, on the American Rescue Plan, the ARPA. And that is, uh, in, uh, expenditures for public health and safety, I would, uh, move that we add for mental health, um, to partner with Antelope Valley Hospital Mental, Palmdale Regional Hospital Mental, and Los Angeles County Mental. Uh, the sum of two million dollars for outreach, for backing up the programs that are in place uh, to go to crisis, families in crisis, uh, that need intervention with someone that is having an issue, uh, for which there is currently very inadequate resources being applied for that. So I would ask that two million dollars from the ARPA funds, uh, be added to the expenditures. And that's on page one hundred and one of one hundred and two.
I will second that if you include that that funding should include, um, funding for the, uh, Met Teams. Uh, what's happened in, uh, I'm gonna give you a great example. Uh, the, the sheriff's department is falling over themselves trying to get the Met Teams put together.
Absolutely agree to that.
We're way out, we're way off base here and, and I sit there and I listen to radio at night and they're constantly calling for Met Teams and they're not available.
That's exactly correct.
So, West Hollywood allocated a significant budget and they went out recruited and they have their Met Team in West Hollywood. Whether the sheriff has them or doesn't have them, they have their people.
Yeah.
So, I would make that friendly amendment and if you agree.
That's included.
Okay, I will second the item then.
Okay.
I have more discussion on that and I.
Mayor, 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 finish one point, please. Uh, just, just Janelle, a question. Um, in the ARPA funds, then, we talked about there being.
I'm trying.
Who was that?
In, in the ARPA funds, there was, uh, discussion by you and by council, uh, that there's seven million dollars available that can be allocated. Is this an appropriate, um, measure or appropriation that we can take tonight?
Yeah, we're gonna vote on something that won't work.
So say that again, I'm sorry. Where's?
He's asking if this is an appropriate expenditure under the guidelines for ARPA.
I will say that based on the brief information that I have, yes. The general category, yes. However, we will have to look at the program in its details and determine.
Depending on how the vote goes, you know where we're going with this?
Absolutely.
So if it's not there, let's figure it out, okay?
Uh, we can figure something out.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
You have anything further on that?
May I speak now?
Yes. Mister Creo has the floor.
So I, uh, fully support that and I want to even increase the amount, uh, for a different program. That money to come from Measure A.D. up to six hundred thousand dollars to have a dedicated L.A. County Sheriff's Mental Assessment Team. My understanding is that the L.A. County Sheriff's Department has a, uh, mental assessment team for the entire county. And because of the support that I hear for mental health issues, I think that it'd be very beneficial for us to have a dedicated team for the city of Palmdale only. What that means is that whether six hundred dollars can afford one or two deputies that are dedicated to Palmdale, that would, uh.
Let's, let's get that clarified. Cap, can we ask? I'm, yeah, might ask. Uh, what's, what's a Met Team guy cost? About a million. Okay.
So, how much does it cost to have a dedicated, uh, mental assessment team for Palmdale? One deputy?
I think you, I think you'd be, I think you'd need more than one, cuz they usually.
They have to go out as a team.
Yeah. So, what?
Well, why don't we have that discussion? Because I actually had a discussion with one of the deputies, uh, on Event Coffee for Beds, uh, in, uh, uh, Crazy Oros. I actually sat next to, next to him, I don't remember his name, but that was a very good discussion I had with him and that's where this is coming from, because I learned that night that there is a dedicated mental assessment team, but again, it's county-wide. We know that that doesn't do anything for us here.
Right, exactly.
And that what that will do is that it will have a dedicated team, but there'll be one, one deputy that is gonna be responsible for sc- calls for service only for the city of Palmdale.
Mayor, uh, if I could address Mister Corio.
Sure, go ahead.
I, I, I'm wholly in support of that and I think it probably ought to be in the vicinity of one point two. But let's, if we can take the ARPA for the two point, the two million dollars to go to, uh, mental health services teaming up with the mental health providers in Antelope Valley, including Los Angeles County, that would be my motion. And then if you care to make a motion under A.B.
I would ask you to consider your motion making part of the six hundred thousand from the A.D. measure.
Yeah.
And the other six hundred from the ARPA funds that you're asking for.
Could, could we ask Captain to come up and talk about the current mental evaluation team that we have at Palmdale Station?
I tried, Cat. I tried.
You know, if we, if we'd handle that separately, I'll, I'll support it. Under A.D., under Measure A.D.
I tried.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're the captain.
Ron Schaefer, Captain, Palmdale Sheriff's Station. Uh, currently, we have three, uh, mental evaluation teams working in the North County. That's Santa Cruz, Palmdale, and Lancaster. Uh, we have coverage through the week and, uh, there's some challenges with that. Uh, there's more expenses than just hiring the deputy and then the services that they're able to provide. This is something we'd wanna have a, a deep conversation, uh, before we started throwing money at the problem. I, I don't wanna just throw money at the problem. Uh, I, I would wanna talk about it, make a plan. Uh, I, I appreciate the sentiment. The need is here. The, genuinely, the need is here. Uh, there's a lot going on in our community. Uh, but in the heat of the moment, uh, I, I don't think.
Yeah, you're, you're a bit at disadvantage because nobody warned you.
Well, no, it's not so much that, but just the heat of the moment, being on the dais, trying to plan for a budget year.
Right.
Uh, uh.
Yeah.
Uh, time could be spent better somewhere else and, and I think it can be pre-planned.
So what if that discussion has to do with the budget that we pay for sheriff's services? Correct me if I'm wrong, but we are paying a certain amount of money for a certain amount of deputies, which we are not getting. So in that discussion, uh, if you think it's viable to ask and, um, go into the sheriff's contract. Because again, correct me if I'm wrong again, but if we are paying, say, twenty million dollars for a hundred deputies, but we're only getting eighty, we're still paying for a hundred.
Uh, so, are we not filling those minutes, though?
Yeah, you're not paying for the people, you're paying for minutes.
Right.
That's how the contract is broken down and you're getting your minutes.
Minutes, okay. So there's no room to negotiate that as part of the partnership to get a dedicated deputy to address?
Can. The, the mental health team would be evaluated the same way. You would be paying for minutes.
Like, just like with the PAC team or anything else? Okay. Well, I, I think Richard's got a, got a motion here.
Yeah.
The second did.
Yeah.
We wanna, we wanna address that and then we can go into, if there's.
Something else, yeah.
Some other where we, where we wanna direct staff to get with the captain.
Yes.
To further evaluate and get the, get an actual number as opposed to just throwing something against the wall here. Because I'll support you on that one, because it's something that's on my notes here to, to accomplish too. That's all we hear at liability trust fund. Well, couldn't get the Met Team there.
So the.
But when a Met Team shows up, it's a very positive outcome.
Well, the challenge we have to is the Met Team doesn't fall under my command.
Okay.
So it's not my contract. Uh, it is with the department, but it's not Palmdale Station.
Yeah.
So those are challenges.
So we'll bring something back, definitely, let's how it was figured it out.
So Captain, I, 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 I want, you, you, I think you made me think of something and that is your deputies roll out on a mental health issue and there's no one there from mental health. There's no one there from County Los Angeles, mental health at all, not available.
Happens a lot.
And the deputy's hands are tied. And the deputy's hands are tied and yet.
No, they, they handle the call. They handle the call.
They handle the call, but the underlying mental health issue isn't addressed.
No, it is.
Well, I've seen different, so.
They don't just leave the person at the location. They will take them, they will transport them to the services that are needed.
If they meet one of three conditions and that is they're a threat to someone, right? An imminent, serious threat.
Danger to self, danger to others, greatly disabled.
And if they don't meet those three things, the deputies are not able to do anything. And sometimes it doesn't meet that threshold. All right, and yet.
Well, our, our Met Teams are, are constrained by the same law.
Yes, I understand.
And it just so happens that they have resources.
Right.
That are available or they know of resources that are available that can provide that additional assistance.
But they're not. Okay? And, and so all I'm trying to do is allocate $2 million so that we can get more response to go with the deputies when there's a crisis moment like that.
If, if you're earmarking that in the budget, that's great. And that, that gives us parameters to work from, to discuss through it and make sure we appropriately staff.
And, yeah.
And plan for.
With the caveat, like Mr. Carrillo said, I mean, I, I know that, again, West Hollywood's putting a whole lot of money into that program because of its necessity and the timeliness and to avoid this stuff showing up at the liability board because we couldn't get a Met Team out there soon enough, okay? So, I think we want to partner with that on that. I think that that's, I think we're, does anybody have a problem with that? I mean, is that where we want to go?
I think the direction related to the budget needs to be to allocate $2 million out of the ARPA fund to a to-be-determined mental health.
Yes.
In a solution, in cooperation with Antelope Valley Medical Center, City of Palmdale Hospital. Palmdale Regional Hospital, excuse me, as well as LA County and the Sheriff's Department.
Okay, so that sounds like a motion and this will sound like a second, okay?
Okay, well, wait a minute, I just want to make sure it's, it's.
So, we're clear, who made the motion?
It's AV, it's AV Hospital, Palmdale Regional, and Los Angeles County Mental Health to provide mental health assistance to the sheriff Met Team.
There we go.
That's great.
Is he good? Okay, and I will again, second that. Okay, City Clerk, can we call a roll?
I've been advised by City Attorney that this is a council vote only.
It's a council only vote? Okay, so Housing Authority, please.
Please refer.
Yeah, referring.
They won't be called up.
Okay.
Councilmember Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Loa?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer?
Yes, thank you. All right.
Okay, and I have one additional ARPA before we get to the other. And that is to say, we, we had a joint city council meeting with the city of Lancaster last year in which we agreed in general to fund two regional centers. One, a recreational center for the city of Palmdale and another one which would be a resiliency center which would accommodate in a case of an emergency such as an earthquake, COVID that just happened, fires that would be out of control, which we see more and more of. And the city of Lancaster allocated $2,500,000 to build a facility that would be responsive to any crisis on a 15-minute notice. They're able to do that. And so, ARPA funds are available and I would, I would move that we allocate $2,500,000 from ARPA funds to supplement the amount of money that was voted on, I believe, last night by the city of Lancaster to build this, what's called the Mark? Is the Mark? What's, what's the exact name of that?
The multi-agency regional resiliency center.
Okay, so, so let's just be clear what that is. That's going to be a conference center that will have a generator and radios and phones. Yeah, that's what it is. And that, that's why you were able to allocate ARPA funds towards it because it's ready, just like Maricur Park Center is and the Oasis Center is, it can be utilized.
I think it's something more than that. Can you elaborate?
In conversations with the Antelope Valley Fair, when COVID hit, there was, it was found in the Antelope Valley that there was not a quick response available to be able to set up a mobile hospital, for example, specific to COVID is what I'm going to speak to right now. So, it took the, the fairgrounds as well as Kaiser, as well as the hospital in conjunction with the city of Lancaster to stand up a mobile hospital. Took us about four weeks. The desire of the Antelope Valley Fair is to, to receive funding from the CDFA to build this multi-agency regional resiliency center that can be stood up similar to their, their agricultural emergency response facility in 15 minutes for any type of emergency, be it COVID-related, be it health, fire, famine, flood, whatever you want to call it, earthquake. Thank you. So, this would be something that would be outfitted in a very similar way and always at the ready with, like you said, generators, radios, and everything in between so that it can qualify for those federal funds for an emergency response.
And let me give an example of how this could really affect the Antelope Valley. In the 1994 earthquake, the interchange of the 14 and the 5 collapsed completely. To a large degree, we were disconnected from down below. In a strong enough earthquake on the San Andreas Fault, and we're about two miles away from it at this point, we could be completely torn apart from down below, from Los Angeles and from the rest of the state. So, this would allow us to have a regional center that could supplement the emergency centers at both of our local hospitals and would provide hospital facilities. So, it's not just providing a generator and telephones, it's much more than that. And it would appropriately respond to a crisis. And earthquake is a real potential here in, in Antelope Valley.
They will, undoubtedly, they will have a cache of supplies and, and things that are there, but in the, in the meantime, it's going to be used for other operations.
Other activities.
So, do we get a cut of that when they're using it for something else?
Yes, absolutely.
So, when they're renting the place out for conferences?
Well, that money all goes to the AV Fair. So, I mean, that's a, that's a separate budget, but.
So, can I jump in?
Might as well.
Of course.
My, my, my concern is this, I was here for the 1994 earthquake where the freeways went down and we were trapped. It would be just as devastating for our freeways or our roads to buckle for the people that live on the east side of Palmdale. They could not get to the fairgrounds. Why could we not have one facility in West Lancaster up there and one in East Palmdale? So, residents from the Antelope Valley have two locations to go to. Asking people from East Palmdale or the Little Rock area or those, those locations to get all the way up to the Antelope Valley Fairgrounds, especially if the roads are buckled or we've got fires going on that they can't get through, makes no sense to me.
Well, I think that the, both of the regional rec centers, that's, they, they have the, they have the, the east side, west side facility capacity there. I think what we're being talked about here is a level above just an evacuation center, but not a full-blown hospital. No way in hell OshPaw's going to let that be a full-blown hospital. Because we saw that during that last thing. But for the record, I was stuck and couldn't get home for a week because I was on the street when the earthquake hit.
Right, and as you mentioned, Ms. Bettencourt, in discussions with the AV Fair, this is actually a proposal that is being funded by the state. And can, can you mention that, please?
There was $150 million allocated by the CDFA or to the CDFA for resiliency centers to be built. We do not have one in the Antelope Valley specifically. And because it's offered through the California Department of Food and Ag, it, the AV Fair is eligible to apply for those dollars and they do believe that they stand a very strong chance to be allocated a large portion of that 150 million because they are months ahead of anyone in a similar situation to get started on a resiliency center.
And yet, that, that amount that would be allocated by the state is not sufficient to build it out.
It is not sufficient, that's correct.
We would be assisting, both cities would be assisting in providing sufficient funds to build out that resiliency center. So, that's my motion.
I'll second that motion, I'll, I'll explain why. We don't know what type of catastrophe we're going to face. It's, it's not predictable. Obviously, earthquakes are predominantly in California. I, I think that's a good partnership and it's, it's going to be a regional facility. And let's just remember that the AV Fairgrounds are the AV Fairgrounds, they're not Lancaster Fairgrounds. We have just as much right to use it. Whether there's an earthquake, it could hit the east side of the valley more or less, we would never know that. It could be the opposite, it could be the west side, we don't know that. But I think that it's, it's, it's a, a way to show that we are going to be working regionally because that's something that will benefit the entire Antelope Valley. Not necessarily either one of them. That's the reason why I would second that motion, knowing that the need is here, knowing that the grant of 150 million is potentially going to be approved because we don't have one and that's already an existing facility. If we were to put one on the east side, I think that that's going to make it even more difficult to have such a facility. We already have one in place, there's some potential money coming in. And I think that that is a good idea to have that be supplemented with what you're requesting. For that reason, I'll make a second to that.
So, that's the motion, we have a second. I think that it's all valid. I was, I actually worked up there at the fairgrounds during that, with the communications team. And it, it was, took way too long to get the equipment, the facility. Once we got a spot, you know, you get the radio teams can get in and they can set up things with baling wire and, and duct tape in a matter of minutes, you know? But it's a matter of, we got to get the power out there, we got to get the facility out there, somebody's got to get the infrastructure in place, so.
Okay, so, I, I guess we can just say, let's get this one built and then after that, we can try and get one on the east side.
Well, I think really the issue is, is can we? Can we get the Oasis and Recur facilities further hardened and, and adequate supply cash so they can be stood up in both, both parts of town? And then you have, you could go to even a higher level by going through the one at the fairgrounds. So, I think that's really where we need to go. All right, well, listen, you got a motion, you have a second, City Clerk, can you call?
Councilmember Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Loa?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, well, let me jump in with mine before you run out of all the money here, Richard. So, one of the things that we keep getting discussion on, we have a lot of debate. I have been trying to meet with some folks on this issue and Ms. Bettencourt has as well. And one of the problems that we have is the, we're kind of at the whim of the county when it comes to some of these housing issues and sheltering issues. And where the, one of the biggest problems we're running into, and we heard testimony on this earlier this evening, is especially for women and children housing. They've got a handful of spots up in, at the, up at the county facility and it's, it's always full. So, I would like to see us look, and I don't want to put a number on this, I'm going to probably provide direction. My motion is, is for the staff to research utilizing some level of the unallocated funds to, and, and I think that, I'll halt my motion for one second here. We want to go out and build a building, we've seen those costs escalate to $600,000, $800,000 per two bedrooms because of all the environmental nonsense and state crap we have to go through to try to build anything. So, what I'd like to do is, there's hotels out there, the county is getting a couple on Sierra Highway, there's apartment buildings that people will be more than willing to sell that aren't full of mold. I'd like to see us go in and find an existing facility that we can turn around and utilize with the focus on families, women, and children. And I don't want to put a number on that right now because I've already talked to some brokers and the numbers go all over the place. And I'm not going to, I, I'm not going to get into the weeds on this. Our role is to set policy. So, that's the motion, is I want to have staff come back and utilize, provide a proposal to utilize some of the unallocated funds to purchase a facility with a focus on families, women, and children.
Is that unallocated funds from ARPA or from the general fund? From wherever?
I'm going to, I'm going to leave that up to them to find that, we're at the most suitable spot.
You know, since we're talking money, it would seem to me that we ought to put a, a monetary value to that.
Well, do you know what a number? I could throw a number out there, but as we saw with the mental health, all of a sudden we found out that $2 million might get, it might not get, so I, I would like them to just bring it back. I want to get adequate homework on it. I remember somebody once saying, it's a budget hearing, we're coming up with willy-nilly numbers, okay?
That's true.
I don't want to do that. I, I don't have the numbers, I know what the need is. So, anyways.
So, let me, let me ask a question, and on second your motion. Ms. Sanchez indicated that these tiny houses could be built for $15,000. Is that, is that something that you've seen or?
Yeah.
You've seen that?
Yes, I've seen that.
I mean, if we, like, for example, if we put in $600,000, then how many of those $15,000 units could be, could be built?
Yeah.
You know?
Well, again, I want, I would like the staff to do the research on it, knowing what our direction is and come back and give us, give us, give us some numbers. I think that this stuff too, with everybody sitting here and said, we want to help, I think one of the concepts we can be looking at, it's not part of the motion at this time, but we provide a field and the Little League provides the services and stuff there. We provide a field and the Socrates League provides the services there. I think that if people are sincere and really want to provide that level of service, I think if we provide the venue for that, perhaps we can get some volunteers and some community support groups and other grant-funded opportunities out there that perhaps help. But I don't know what those numbers are. I've been talking to a guy that, a former Police Protective League representative that wants to work on something for women's shelter, but I think that knowing the costs and all the environmental and state hurdles and thresholds we have to reach, I think that trying to build something new creates a whole nother fiasco for us. So, but if staff finds that they can do it and they got something great, but anyways.
So long as the study includes the microunit.
I'm not, I'm not limiting it, I would just, I would.
Including that and anything else, okay?
I would like us to try to look at, if possible, there's some existing facilities out there that might be appropriate, but if staff finds something else, I think the motion is.
Include it.
Big enough that we'll include that.
Second. So, so is this a motion of, of the city council or is this a motion of the Housing Authority and the city council?
I think it would be from all of us because it's a housing issue as well.
So, to add to that, I think that there is at least four pots of money where we can get funds, CDVG, Housing Authority, ARPA funds and.
That's why I'm not trying to pitch it all in.
No, but I'm just saying that if we, if you consider including those four buckets of money.
Any and all resources and anything we can leverage.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything from you guys or do you think, you guys good with that? Okay, we have a motion, Mr. Loa seconded it. Can you call the roll?
Mayor Chair Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim, Vice Chair, Chair Pro Tim Loa?
Yes.
Council members, directors, members, commissioners, Carrillo?
Yes.
Bettencourt?
Absolutely.
Frogasheins?
Yes.
And Denny?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we got the clock taken here, I have a, I've, I've got a lid.
That's my turn?
Oh, you got something?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I know what you got there. Are you ready?
Moving along with the the ARPA funds, um there is an item here under expenditures, uh page six of the ARPA funds, the staff report. What does services to these proportionally impacted communities mean? Uh, and this may be something that we want to discuss at a later time, but I just wanted to bring that up. Because in twenty twenty three, uh for services to disproportionately impacted communities, there's six point, six point four million. So I I feel that we need to get more in depth of as to what that means. And if there is a plan from staff on how they're gonna utilize those funds.
Okay, yeah, there there are some guidelines on that, can you give us the Reader's Digest version of it?
I don't have those guidelines with me at the moment.
I don't, I don't want that.
However, I will just say that the categories here, um negative economic impacts, services to disproportionately impacted communities. Um, those we do not have dollar limitations on. So within those guidelines, which are very, very lengthy, about four hundred pages, we we can definitely have that discussion.
That's why I'm suggesting that that we can get back with staff and see what that is, because disproportionately impacted communities could be
We do have quite a bit of flexibility there.
Could be based on zip codes, on um
I think it's, yeah, census strikes, I think they use that.
Census strikes, um, couple of other things. Uh, capital improvement list, uh page eighty eight of one or two, McAdam Park. Uh, P zero one three zero, but in the middle of the page, I see that for twenty twenty three, there's only an allocation of five hundred fifty thousand dollars from McAdam Park. Uh, you thought that there was a um design plan in progress to rehabilitate the um baseball uh fields. Is this part of that, about five hundred fifty thousand dollars is gonna do that? This is just for the design?
This is for the design that, um, for the McAdam Park renovation, correct?
Just for the design.
Five hundred fifty thousand just for the design, okay?
Yeah, just for an estimate for the design, we have, we have not gone out for an RQ yet, we're we're compiling the 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 detailed scope of work, but then we'll
That makes sense, and that again, it's just on the
Yeah, cause I don't know what cost will be for construction.
Right, so we thought it was five million dollars or something, so.
Yeah.
So we'll, you guys will come back with a number once you
Yes, for when when we go back to into construction, we'll we'll rebudget probably likely next fiscal year for the construction of the site.
Great, and this is coming from uh baby measure?
Yes, Measure AV.
Okay, um, one more.
Okay.
Sports field improvements, one point six million dollars.
What page is that?
Uh, that's page ninety five of one or two.
Do you have the count, oh, the P zero one zero nine, is that what you got?
Yes.
Okay, sports field improvements, um, one point five million dollars. I believe Eric, maybe you can help me on that one. I think it's for a lot of different um
Improvements.
Improvements to all the fields that we have.
Okay.
So it's not specific to each site yet, but as uh improvements are needed, we will pull from that fund.
And and that does not include landscaping services, that's a whole different thing.
Yeah, that, yeah, no, these are improvements, whether we're going to uh redo the tennis courts or we do the pool uh filters or things like that. Concrete repairs around the park sites, things like that.
So along with that, uh I know that McAdam has the pickle course, I think that's what they're called, pickle course?
The pickleball courts, yes.
I remember that about three months ago, there was a process in which the pickleball courts were gonna be redone, restrite, uh where is that? Is that part of this, one point six million dollars, a separate?
Or is that an existing CIP?
So it
I think it's all part of, I think it's already done too.
Yeah, I believe, I believe, yeah, I believe it's already done, also Desert Sands Park as well.
Desert Sands.
Those tennis courts were renovated and pickleball was painted, in a combination between tennis and pickleball as well.
I've heard the guys that are playing over there at Desert Sands, they very much appreciate that.
Okay. Well, I'm glad to hear that some uh resident called me and asked me about that, because I guess there's a league that plays on Saturdays and Wednesdays. And I've been able to use them for, I guess, it was being repaired.
Okay.
One last thing.
There's never a last thing.
Yeah, you're right. Um, I talked about this in the past, um maybe it's been six months or even more. Yellin Park, there's no grass, there's uh, I find it difficult for residents to wanna have a family day. Uh, where they can put a blanket on decomposed ground.
Very zero escape.
Yeah, and I asked about this before and I was told that staff wasn't looking to it. Uh, because the the only uh grass area is the the basin where they do the multi uh sports facility. But it's just really unfair to other families that wanna go to the park. And there's just nowhere to to sit down because the fields are so heavily used.
Is that part of the five million that's in the in that budget for the park there?
Um, well, actually, on on for Yellin Park, we we have a couple of avenues that we're looking at. We have applied for a grant to go in and try to do a lot more landscape enhancement enhancements on the phase one of what the original park site was, putting in more trees, more ground cover, if we can get in more gr- grass. And then on the phase two aspect of it, that actually, there's portions of that phase two that is overlapped on the phase one.
So we went through two grants, I believe, and we didn't qualify, so what I'm asking the council is that we can find the money through Measure AV or ARPA, whatever money is available. So we can actually have grass in in that park on phase one. Phase two, I understand it's a whole different process, we're we're going through that. But I mean, if you're familiar with Yellin Park, I mean, there's, it's just dirt.
We went just there on Saturday.
Yeah, we're just there on Saturday, I mean, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
So is it with the with the with the grants that you're applying for, is there um, are these leveraged grants, in other words, like with matching? Well, the grant will provide X dollars if you provide Y dollars.
I believe on the one grant that we're actually, it's it's a full grant, I don't believe that there is a match on it.
And when would we anticipate?
Um, we should be hearing soon, I, it it should be fairly soon on that, on the phase one.
It's denied, and that's, that's the what I've been experiencing uh with a lot of this asked for Jelling. I don't wanna wait for a grant, that is gonna be denied.
When you say very soon, what kind of numbers are you talking, what are you talking about?
I would say probably within the next two months. It should have already been out for, it should have already come back in, so. But I, it is a state grant, it is a state land and water grant, so.
And what is our, is the design and um um is uh, is there a plan?
Yes, we are, we already had a plan, so when Yellin was first built, we had a lot of landscaping
Yeah.
that we had to come back and we had to take a lot of it out to fit within the funding that we had available. So now we are going and using that base plan and be reinstalling more planting material.
So how much is a grant we're planning for?
Oh, I, off the top of my head, um, I would probably say at least a million is what we were looking to do.
All right, great.
So I'm, I'll, I'll um negotiate with you guys, it's like you don't wanna put the money, you wanna wait for a grant. If in two months, uh we hear that the grant is denied, how are we putting grass in Yellin Park?
Sure, now, what's the, what's the amount that
She just said
About a million.
A million dollars, yeah, make the motion, I'll say that.
Okay, motion that we include a million yards of uh worth of grass.
As a, as a contingency, if they, if they grant this?
If in two months, not, if it's not be six months or, you know, revise the application, you know, two months.
If the grant is denied, then it's a million dollars allocated to put grass at Yellin Park.
Thank you.
So, so council, I just wanna advise you, based on our projections for budget, that would be dipping into our reserve for either Measure AV or general fund. That's just something that I want you to be aware of, and we will take that direction, but I want, I wanna make that clear.
Work hard on getting that grant.
Or we can reallocate some of the Measure AV dollars to float that, so maybe provide a little bit more direction.
Reallocated.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, I give a motion, um, I'll second that.
I seconded it.
Oh, you're gonna go and second it? Okay, so I have a motion to second, go ahead, city clerk. Glad to see there's money in there for the Oasis Park upgrades too.
The city council meeting, I didn't vote for it, okay.
So this is on the city council only.
Councilmember Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Loa?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, council, thank you. Okay, there's an uh an additional item that was referred to at the very beginning, which is salaries.
Yes, and I I feel that I need to um give an explanation as to why I requested that salaries be increased. It is no secret that we're losing employees for various reasons. Some of them are getting to the retirement age where they retire and and, you know. But we're also losing employees to other agencies that are paying way better than we are. One of them is Lancaster, and we have what, maybe one or two employees that just within a year, maybe a little bit more, decided to move to Lancaster because um, if you get paid better, I'll do that too. Um, and it's hard to recruit people. I um, I heard uh council member Bettencourt say that uh we need to do a better job at um attract attracting employees. Um, but we also need to do a better job in retaining employees. Uh, some of the the positions are specialized positions, some are city planned by profession. I'm always looking at APA, uh Western Magazine, there's various other organizations that provide those services because they're specialized services, just like civil engineers, there's this specific memberships where these positions are advertised. Uh, I believe that the reason why we're not being successful at attracting uh new talent is because we're just not paying what other cities are paying. Uh, another issue is, uh, you know, people think twice about driving to come up here to the Antelope Valley. Um, it is true, I believe that the workforce is down in San Fernando or the LA area. And if somebody gets a job closer to home, they're gonna take that. So it's difficult to convince somebody to come up to the Antelope Valley or for the city of Palmdale when they know that they're gonna be driving up here, and they're gonna get paid twenty percent less. That's just not very attractive. So that's why I asked the council to consider giving staff direction to um give a a a better salary, what what we could. Um, I think I mentioned fifteen percent or twenty percent, because that's what the market uh shown, uh the difference between other uh agencies. Uh, the seven percent, uh that staff came back, but they think it's, it's, it's okay, I wish it could be more, but we just can't afford it. Uh, they're getting three percent from the previous uh council meeting that the council approved. And the uh additional five percent for those employees that are at that step, ready to go to the next step. That's just part of what the uh, the 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 deal is, you go through uh your steps, you make a you make a positive uh review and that's just the way it is. Not everybody will get the additional five percent because they're not there yet. There are some that are there, they they go through their merit increase of five percent and that's, that's great. Um, that, those are the reasons I brought this up to the council. Again, I I wish that we could do better, uh but I think that seven percent and three percent and those that are at the next uh review level. I think that's, that's, that's fair.
See, the the problem that I have on is is blanket salaries. Giving somebody fifteen or twenty percent on top of their hundred and fifty thousand dollar salary is far different than giving it to somebody who's making thirty thousand or forty thousand or fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Just giving fifteen or twenty percent across the board to people that are already making over a hundred thousand, hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred thousand. That's, that's, I I just cannot justify doing that.
So to to answer that, uh Ms. Bettencourt, that is true, but how many uh directors have we lost? How many managers have we lost, uh for various reasons again? And there may be, um, I I'm sure there is less of those employees that make that kind of money at one hundred and thirty thousand than the majority of the starting jobs that start at forty five thousand or fifty thousand. Uh, I do agree with you, but again, we we've just lost so much talent too. Uh, and a lot of those are directors and managers. And if you compare salaries at that level between directors and managers, you will find the same results in other agencies.
So let me, let me just ask then, so are you proposing something different than what the manager did?
No, I just felt that I wanted to explain, right?
Seven, seven and three. I I just wanna add a couple, since I know we're under time pressure. Um, this discussion, Mr. Carrillo, brings to mind a discussion that we had about twenty years ago. Twenty, when we were dealing with Mr. Toon at the time.
Okay.
And um, Mr. Toon had been very successful in bringing Antelope Valley Mall, the entire redevelopment of Forty Seventh Street East. The construction of um uh S, Avenue S, all the way out to uh somewhere around Fortieth. And many other projects like that. And essentially, at the time, uh the local, the Lakers had a very successful coach, at the moment, I'm blanking on the name. But my point is, you get, you pay what you get. And I expect that with these raises, that the entire staff will be dedicated to competing to bring projects to the city of Palmdale. To be successful, to bring development, to bring housing, to bring bu- uh particularly bringing jobs. And that's, that's what's expected, and 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 that's what I expect as a standard uh from the city manager's office and from the rest of the directors and managers. Uh, these people don't just lie around waiting for something to happen. These people are actively out there trying to bring business to the city of Palmdale and bring paying jobs. And so I am in whole support of seven percent plus a three percent, but I expect results, and I think we must have them. Um, we are also somewhat between fifteen and twenty percent lower than our neighboring cities in terms of pay scale. And so we're losing people not only to our neighbors, but just to other areas. So I know that we're paying less than Lancaster, we're paying less than the city of Santa Clarita. And I'm certain, having worked for the county of Los Angeles in the past, that we're paying way low as far as comparison with the county. So I second your motion.
Okay, I have a motion, and I have a second.
I think Ms. Bettencourt, we should
I just want us to be cautious about the, well, Lancaster pays more, because now what Lancaster employees are gonna do is, wow. You know, Palmdale just got you fifteen percent raises, so now they're gonna start, it it's a game that, you know, that we're gonna play back and forth. Lancaster pays more, I'm gonna go there, Palmdale pays more, I'm gonna go there.
I don't think this is gonna get us there yet.
The response is that the seven plus three percent still puts us at less than what Lancaster is paying their employees.
But it removes that, it removes that, it helps narrow that gap.
Yeah.
Okay, so I get it, you got a motion, you got a second, and this is for the council. To
I I I'm sorry, what, what was the motion?
To uh, uh, an increase in the salaries across the
Very good.
Concur, to concur with the staff recommendation.
Yes, okay, well, all right, very good.
So that's a for the council. Try to get through each one of these in the next minute and a half. Go ahead.
Councilmember Bettencourt?
No.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Loa?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer?
Yes, all right, so on the balance of this budget, uh do I have a motion that with these amendments as amended, to adopt the council um, housing authority, uh and all the other ones that the staff write into the record, to adopt that budget?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Loa, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, I, Ms. Frogasines?
Yes.
And that's legit that we can have housing?
Um, I I would suggest that it be from a council member and then certainly that we can
Because some of it's not housing and some of it
Correct.
Okay, so good try, but thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, all right, so but everybody votes?
Everybody votes.
City clerk?
Mayor Chair?
Mayor Chair Hoffbauer?
How far I?
Mayor Pro Tim Vice Chair, Chair Pro Tim Loa?
Yes.
Council members, directors, members, commissioners, Carrillo?
Yes.
Bettencourt?
Yes.
Frogasines?
Yes.
And Denny?
Yes.
Thank you.
That will conclude the items on the um on the, on the agenda and in the housing authority, so we will adjourn this meeting. And our next meeting is July thirteen, and thank you everybody for being here, you know how to get us, thank you.